I plead allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're here for our special meeting of June 27th. And next, we have oral communications. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes.
It doesn't appear we're going to have any public comments tonight unless they use that methodology where they do the DMV call-in or something. But having none of those present, then we'll go to Commissioner's comments.
I have one comment. I had the opportunity to go to a house that overlooks the village. And I noticed that the house, the building with the mansored roof where we let them put the access to the roof but they weren't supposed to use it, you know, they have furniture and a hammock and those things up there. And I'm not so concerned about, you know, code enforcement on this issue. I just want us to be aware when we approve something, you know, I think we need to be thoughtful about whether or not it's a good condition that's not going to cause a lot of problems for staff to try and enforce because with this one, it would just become a cat and mouse game, you know, if the staff tried to do something. So just so we're aware of what we're doing.
I brought that one up a couple of months ago. That's the one that, we approved it based on the solar panels, but they never put the solar panels up.
Right. And now they're using it as a roof deck.
Right. It's a nice little setup they have up there.
It is a nice little setup, yeah.
Okay, any more Commission comments? How about staff comments?
Staff's no comments.
Okay, then we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one from our special meeting May 16th and another from a special meeting May 19th. Do you want to try to approve them all in one motion?
On me. Go ahead.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. So now we'll move into the public hearing of our special meeting tonight, which is our zoning code update. I'm ready for staff report.
Okay, the first item that we'd like to discuss is future meetings, just so we can time things correctly. In July, we have one here, normal meeting on July 21st. In looking at the calendar, one possible date is July 18th in which to have a special meeting. And we wanted to get your feedback on that tonight. I have not heard from Commissioner Smith or Commissioner Ortiz regarding these dates, so I'd also have to check in with them, but would like any feedback you have regarding possible meeting on the 18th, a special here.
Yeah, I'm gone till the night of the 21st.
Okay.
So I could do it on the 25th. But not on the 18th here.
Okay.
There's fine with me.
I'm fine either way.
Either way. Okay, well, we'll follow through emails on that.
And if I'm not here, that's just the way it is, that's fine. You guys need to move on.
So maybe we'll wait to find out what Commissioner Smith and Ortiz's availability is. Another thing we may want to do, depending on how many other items are in the hoppers, have a longer meeting, on a regular meeting on the 21st.
First.
So that we kind of get through some of that stuff before we hit August.
And it's fine with me. It looked like the last part were items that were pretty straightforward, the wireless communication and those things.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start in. So this evening, we're going to...
I'm sorry, I forgot to read my report to nobody in the audience and maybe people are watching already, but this meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications, cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded for future viewing. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at citificapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Alex Sidde. As a reminder, please turn off cell phones during the meeting and should somebody come to this meeting, they could walk up to the podium, sign their name, and we'll give them a few minutes to speak. Okay, I've done my due diligence there, so, sorry, Katie.
Thank you. Okay, so this evening, we're going to go through the redlined zoning code, so all the changes that were requested during the planning commission meetings and special hearings are now in the document and redlined. We're actually going to open a Word document of this and make the changes live as we work through, so you can see them. And we'll work together on them until they're acceptable and then move on to the next. And as we go through these, I'll start with the chapter and if you'd like, I could start by telling you which chapter we're going to be reviewing and you can tell me if you'd like to discuss it further, if you have any changes or would like to pass over a chapter in the event that there are no modifications to be made. Does that sound like an acceptable approach or would you like to go redline by redline through the document?
That's fine. I mean, I really only have just like two items and one comment.
And I just have one item further on, so either way you want to do it's fine with me.
So do you want to just hear our items and move on?
Sure.
That sounds, I think, a great way to do it.
That seems like, okay. Go ahead, because I have to find my...
Okay. So mine was, I want to make certain we're not making a mistake in the mixed-use neighborhood zoning district. It's on page 2014. And what we've ended up doing is saying if there is a residential use to the rear of the property, then there's a minimum 20-foot setback. And if there's no residential use, we're requiring a 10-foot setback. And I'm wondering if we want to get rid of the 10-foot setback because that's really a space that's not large enough for anyone to do much with. And if it's commercial, a budding commercial, it seems to me that we ought to give the applicant the opportunity to do the best design, not just mandate that 10-foot setback.
And I'd like to, just as a point of clarification, that this did exist within, it exists today under the neighborhood commercial.
Which exact section is this referring to?
What?
The section that you're referring to?
It's on page 2014. And I was looking at the table, 1720-42. I just thought, you know, maybe the rear yard setback could be a stat, because they're going to have to go through a design review process anyway, you know, a rear yard setback could be established through that or...
I'll try and catch up there.
I was just trying to give them a little more flexibility. As we do give flexibility on parcels where the width or depth is significantly less than typical parcels within the zoning district, we already have that in there.
Isn't that footnote?
That is a footnote.
I mean, that footnote four?
But even if it's just a standard-sized parcel and that space isn't being used for anything...
But doesn't say we can reduce the rear yard setback?
Only on parcels where the width or depth is significantly less than typical parcels within the zoning district.
So a couple...
I was just going to say that the planning commission may reduce the, you know, front side or rear yard setback when a parcel is adjacent to a commercial and just leave it at that.
Take out that last clause.
Uh-huh.
I'm okay with that.
Do you want to be a little more specific with adjacent on all three sides to commercial? Or, because I think within the M E N, a lot of them...
Right, I think we want to, if it's, if there's commercial around it, then we...
Okay, or surrounded by commercial.
Right.
That'll be an additional footnote.
Or you could rewrite footnote number four, whatever you think is appropriate.
Adjacent to and surrounded by?
But I think it's an addition to four. So, because the other one is for the examples across the street when there's smaller lots. So we'll want to do four and five.
Right, I don't follow.
So this is in addition to footnote number four, so number four, we'll keep as is, that there's still an exception for smaller lots?
Isn't adjacent to and surrounded by redundant?
No, I mean, it could be adjacent to one, like on one side of the property. I think what I heard is if you were kind of, had commercial development on all sides...
And it's surrounded by.
Right. So it should be just surrounded by.
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing is keep four as it was and then we'll add a five to allow in that scenario where it's surrounded by because four, well...
Well, I think that four lets us do what five had there too, because five required the commercial before. You know, five, the way five said it, four said the parcel is adjacent to commercial along the side and rear property lines. So that's what four already had that in there. So I'm just saying that that should be available for any lot, not just the smaller ones.
Okay. Does the language look good to you?
That's what we want to do, it looks good to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm fine. Okay.
I just want to bring up one concern that I have is across the, so we had talked about in the CN district, across the street where there's smaller parcels.
We have a footnote for them in there. That is footnote number three.
Okay, because I was going to say those are adjacent to residential. Thank you. Okay, the next section?
And the next one is, I just think you want more ambiguous language on the mall redevelopment, what you're going to require for that redevelopment.
So that's in the commercial...
And that is on 24-9. This says, "Any major redevelopment of the Capitola Mall shall require the preparation and approval of a specific plan." And I think it should be should or could or something like that because since specific plans are set up in state law, something might happen and you might find yourself stuck. So I'd just give myself a little more wiggle room.
I think that's fine, at least from staff's perspective, we could put something like the city may require.
Right.
So it's our discretion, not an applicant's.
Yeah, that sounds good.
They just changed shall to may?
May require. Yeah.
The city may require preparation?
Right, the city may require.
I guess we can just remember that one.
Okay, I've noted that in writing.
Okay. So much for our real-time editing.
That's it for me.
And I cannot find my, mine, so maybe you can help me, because I thought I had it tabbed in here. But it's probably going to be a little more controversial than that. So we've discussed parking in the village area and we've become a little more flexible with the square footage per parking. And the more I think about it, I kind of mentioned that maybe we should just let the fire marshal dictate what occupancy is, but the more I think about it, I really, I really think that's probably an inappropriate way of looking at it, but I'm sure my fellow commissioners may have a different view on it. Because, you know, our parking issue, which is a significant parking issue three months of the year for sure, often during the off-season and during the middle of the week, it's not an issue at all. So really, for those businesses who could maybe have a better, do better business with more seats in the house, we're holding their hands back on that, we're tying their hands back on that. So for me, I don't know, I just think maybe we could just let the occupancy of a building be based on whatever the fire marshal dictates occupancy is, not based on restricted because of parking that they have no control, none of their own parking down there really, other than...
You mean just remove parking requirements from the village?
Well, I don't know how we do it, and that's why I bring my...
Well, I would be willing to have a discussion about that, but I think that's a huge community issue.
It is a big issue.
And I don't think that that's something that, you know, the three of us or the five of us up here, you know, want to make those, that kind of broad decision without there being some sort of public process that involves the property owners and the businesses down there and have that discussion. And I would be happy, as I said, to engage in that, but I'm not willing to make huge changes. I just think that's not our job or our role to make those decisions for the community.
I think it's obviously one that needs input, but I think it's our role to, we're in the middle of that process to at least have that discussion. And I don't know where we go to have the discussion, but I think we end up tying the hands of business that, business are going to survive based on their own merit for the most part. But we have many businesses down there that have nobody in their restaurant or some of their businesses, and others that are, you know, waiting in line because of seats that we say they can't sit due to a parking restriction that I think ties their hand, so, you know...
The one point I would bring up is we did get rid of the seat rule.
Right.
So at least that problem, you know, if the council adopts it at the end, won't be an issue any longer.
Okay.
So it would be as many, you know, tables and chairs you can realistically fit within a square-footage area and comply with building and fire codes you could do.
Okay, I thought we kept the seat rule based on, we loosened the restrictions...
We got rid of seats.
But we got rid of the seats completely?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, then, I don't know that I have a real issue with it. I just, I just hate that we tie business hand based on a parking problem that exists during a certain time period and it doesn't affect all the businesses, so...
Well, we'll probably still have some constraints on certain types of expansions as a result of the ordinance, but, well, you know, my view is that the whole thing is kind of a big illusion.
It is.
Yeah, so I'm hoping that at some point, somebody, some group figures out something that makes logical sense to me.
But I think at this point, it should stay the way it is so this draft ordinance can go on to the council.
Plus, I have Coastal Commission who's definitely not going to allow us to have no parking restrictions.
Maybe that's why I couldn't find it in the redlines.
It's gone!
Okay, so scrap that, I was here that night, I'm sure, but, okay. So now where do we want to go?
If the Commission doesn't have anything else, we theoretically could adjourn. We could go through it more carefully if you'd like, but...
Through the what?
Through the redlines, if you wanted to see each one of them, but if you've looked at it and you're satisfied...
We're not going to do coastal stuff?
Not this evening.
Well, maybe you could highlight some of the important changes and if you think they require some, any discussion. I mean, some of them are just...
One section we could go through is the mixed-use village, how we separated that out, if you'd like, for separating out the guidelines, but...
Some of them look like they were just edits, basically.
Yeah, I mean, I...
We, in preparing for this, I thought there'd be a lot of time spent on it, and so that means that Ben did a great job implementing the changes.
Yeah.
But, so within the mixed-use zoning district, we were given direction to separate the mixed-use village from the mixed-use neighborhood zoning district, so that's one of the larger changes that came out of the planning commission. We did separate those standards so it'd be more user-friendly once someone comes to the counter. And there are also new design guidelines or, not new design, the guidelines that were at the end were, are more specific to the two, based on those uses. So if you'd like, we've created new development standards at the beginning. And then a list, I guess within that, we removed the other. Then we outline where the village overlay is. And there's, the new mixed-use village is separated. And that was the difference in the setbacks that we were talking about previously. And then you'll see, following each of those is the separated guidelines for each, so that's one of the major changes. So you can see this is all new. And putting in the daylight standard when a mixed-use commercial is next to a residential, that's been added to this section. And then the design guidelines, not all of them were, I think the village has more than the mixed-use neighborhoods at this point, because the village is more design-centric. Other than that, another big change was the Village Hotel and placing that in the new chapter, so moving that out of the mixed-use village. Within our commercial and industrial standards, there were some discrepancies in the code that have been fixed in terms of open space requirements. That's one we could spend a moment on discussing, because I, that caught my eye today when I was reviewing. If we want to go to the open space requirement within the commercial chapter, if we could go to page 24-6, and it's in table 1724-3. The landscaped open space minimum for industrial, it says, "As determined by the permit approval process." I was thinking it might be good to add up to 5% as determined by the permit approval process, so that when one looks at the code, they're not expecting to go beyond a certain point, or they have some kind of expectation of what it could be up to for an open space requirement. And your industrial, typically your standards are as loose as the community commercial or...
Yeah, I would be fine with that change.
That was just one minor one, but at least sets an expectation for a developer before they get to planning commission.
Right.
So, and we could change that in both sections. Okay, so is up to 5%?
Works for me in the, in the, this is in the industrial zone.
Industrial zone, yeah. So it's consistent with community commercial, but it could be less?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't find it.
I've got it written down.
Okay.
And minor changes to the special purpose zoning district, very minor, we took out the public parking in the coastal zone and we've moved that to the coastal. The planned development zoning district, 17.36, that might be one that we can pull up and look at, but this brought in the conceptual review standards. And it also includes the, where it's allowed is, you added the 20,000 square foot or more minimum, which is new. And then the conceptual review was added as a required step that doesn't give any development rights or any idea that something's been approved. It's very clear that it's a conceptual review. So a lot of that chapter has changed within the redlines, so that was a big change. And then from that, we drafted a new chapter on conceptual review, which we reviewed at the last meeting, and that is not ready for your review yet, the redlines in this packet. One other item we could talk about is, if we go to chapter 17.52, accessory structures and uses. There was a question that came up about the separation of, this is going to be in the first section, under 1752.020 on page 52-1. A question came up about regarding how it's regulated under building code for separation between structures and what's required by zoning code. In talking with the building official, I think it would be wise to take out on number three and a building permit, it should just be related to the zoning. A design permit is required for an accessory structure with one or more of the following, because by taking out electrical features in that, it, electrical features, if a permit comes in for a, over-the-counter permit for an accessory structure and it has electrical in it, which we've stated under the zoning code, we no longer want to review, it would require a building permit, so just creating, and it would have setback standards or not essentially setback standards, but fire rating standards. So it could be right up to the building but have sprinklers or a certain type of firewall, so it really becomes a building review at that point. So we did strike in the number four that that separation is required, but as permits come in, the building official would make a determination of whether or not it needs a building permit, but by striking under three and a building permit, then it's specific only to the planning review and doesn't mix the two. So that's another change that could be made.
That would be fine with me, if you want to do that.
So we'll strike and a building permit are and insert is. Okay, under fences and walls, chapter 17.60, if we go to the first page, we have added standards in which are findings that need to be made and when the planning commission may allow deviation from new fences, so if you want to take a minute to look at those, but unique circumstances exist on the site such as property lines abutting a highly trafficked public street or path.
Which one was that?
This is page 60-1, and it's under permit requirements, under B, design permits, that the planning commission may allow fences and walls that deviate from height, placement, and material standards with the approval of a design permit. And the following findings have to be made, so the planning commission may approve a deviation to a fence standard only when, and then there's the three new findings. The first is, "Unique circumstances exist on the site such as a property line abutting a highly trafficked public street or path. The deviation is necessary for the reasonable use and enjoyment of the property." And three is, "The deviation will not result in a significant adverse impact on neighboring properties or the community at large." So I was really thinking about, like, the Wharf Road example that we had recently.
Do we want to do anything about buildings that have sort of historically had something? I mean, what I'm actually thinking about, you know, is the hedge in front of like Commissioner Ortiz's house. I mean, their whole house is designed using that hedge because it's been there for 40-something years. Seemed to me if something happened, if someone had that situation and something happened to that, you know, they would clearly want me to put up... to that, you know, they would clearly want need to put up a six-foot fence, because of their, the way their house is designed, you would need to sort of have that privacy. I mean, I'm just wondering if we want to put in something in there, or if they can, you know, show historically, you know, there's been a...
It looks like, it seems like it would meet that, though, if they could show that need at the planning commission. But I agree, you know, like, along the railroad tracks, a lot of backyards along the railroad tracks, that is a highly trafficked, loud air corridor, that there's no property of butt side other than, so it wouldn't really affect any other neighbors.
Being up on, like...
Up on Depot Hill?
Well, on Depot Hill, the jewel box may be a little, well, yeah, once you get to that one side, where it's behind, you know, like, on the other side of Jade Street, maybe it would be the same, same thing.
And for the Fanmar people, I think it's even a worse situation, because the railroad track is up high, and their backyards are down low.
Right, that, that's a good example.
So, but I thought we did something about fences, if they're not adjacent, I mean, if they're but open space, or...
Okay, addition.
So I, I think with the Fanmar, number two would apply, the deviation is necessary for the reasonable use and enjoyment of the property.
Right.
That's a good way to address that.
Yeah, I think, I think these address the need, myself.
Okay.
Did you see the addition? She just put up?
Yeah.
One.
That works for me. And is it at all, or, it says the planning commission may allow fences and walls that deviate, the planning commission may approve a deviation to the, to a fence standard only when?
All three? I was thinking that should be only when one or two plus three.
Yeah.
That's what you need after three.
Or when one of these applies, or one or more.
No, not just, you have to have one or two.
Yeah, when one or more.
No, I mean, you have to have, there are two, numbers one and two are alternatives, but number three always has to be met.
That's a good catch, you're right, Ed.
Yeah, right?
You're right.
Yeah.
Well, is three more of a finding, then, and we could change that to a finding? If I wish we approved a deviation?
Seems like a finding, yeah.
Well, you, the way you could do it is, just leave one and two in, and then at the end, but provided that the deviation will not result.
Ah, cool.
Yeah.
That's...
That's a turning language.
Yeah, that's, that took a long time, education, too.
Yeah. Great for them, just worth your degree right there.
It wouldn't actually be an extra sentence, I don't know.
Yeah.
Start it with a capital, like, just put a semicolon at the end of and, and two...
Maybe you put it right before the planning commission may approve, so provided that the deviation will not...
There you go, that works, too.
Planning commission may approve the deviation. So before the sentence, very beginning. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And... Let's see what else we could put into it.
Anything else we can approve?
Oh, we, we added the fences and walls as landscape features, so that was making an exception for landscape features, to keep things interesting in front yards.
Are there any changes to the ADU provision?
Yeah, I'm trying to mind my memory banks to remember where you fell on it, but I know we discussed eliminating...
We made changes, but are there any changes you made to what we did?
On this new draft?
That's 17.74.
We don't have that section yet. Oh, there it is.
Okay, so we'll go to 17.74. We included the changes that were mentioned at planning commission, including at first it was allowed in additional zones, such as the village mixed-use, so we took that out because it, multiple families allowed there regardless. And the 5,000 square foot minimum, it really wouldn't happen in that zone. That was the first change, is where it's applicable. If, on page two of that, we also clarified that on a two-story secondary dwelling, the planning commission is, requires, reviews require approval by the planning commission. During the issues and options, and now we'll go to design and development standards, during issues and options, we had a discussion on whether or not the owner should have to occupy the site, and that changed between the issues and options, during, we said that's an outdated standard. During issues and options, when we looked at this again during the write-off of the draft, we were directed to, let's keep that standard in, it really affects part, just how they're managed, and, so that's back in the draft, see.
Is there a state enabling act for this?
There are, there's, there's state legislative limits, our ability to regulate second units.
We go to page four.
Are we consistent with it?
We think we are.
Okay. Nobody's checked.
Again, the, the new standards for two-story secondary dwelling units, it's just outlined that they can be part of a single secondary dwelling unit for two stories, or they can be located above the ground floor garage, but that they do require planning commission approval, so that's new. These also, within our land use table, it changed from an administrative review, typically we approve them administratively. So within each zone, you would see them, instead of an A on the land use table, it's now an M, so it's a minor use permit, which means noticing goes out to the neighbors, which is new. And then they can request that the planning, the planning commission have a formal review, or, actually, it first goes to the community development director, and then planning commission. So that's new. And parking was added, under J, that one off-street parking space shall be provided for the secondary dwelling unit, so that was new. Under orientation, there's new discussion on orientation. Originally, it was really geared towards a description of alleyways, which is not applicable to most of these, so just clarified about how that major access stairs, decks, and entry, and major windows and walls face the primary residence, or the alleyway, if applicable. So that just cleans that up. And then to prevent, to maintain privacy on the neighboring sides or rear yards have been minimized. So those were the big changes to the accessory dwelling units. And there was the one question that came up during the review, asking, how do we regulate the second story? And that was not answered in the initial code, so this is why it's been beefed up more to explain that. A couple minor changes in under environmental sensitive habitats, we just clarified that just the wood-burning fireplaces shall be prohibited in structures built where monarch butterflies. But then the city discourages wood-burning fireplaces in residential uses, that was something that, can we put something about encouraging, discouraging, I guess, the wood burning? So, but other than that, I don't have any real large items. I think the separation in the mixed-use zones was one of the larger changes that took place in the ADUs, but...
We changed some wording for the Tannery-Gault Triparian Corridor.
Good, good.
And to date, now, these little tables that I've been putting together, they're all updated and explain exactly what was changed in the code. So those are, have been updated now that we're in the red line section. So the next group that comes out will also have exactly where the changes took place, so, or what changes made.
The impact of that, where the city discourages, it would sort of, if someone was coming to the planning commission for some discretionary or design approvals, they might take that into consideration.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like I won't be here for the coastal discussion.
Potentially, we'll see.
Well, if I'm not, I have just one sort of broad comment about it. You know, the, the standards are set up like it's a 50-year setback, it's not a 50-foot setback, it's all done in years. And I believe that they would like to make it 100 years. And their argument is that, you know, because of global warming, it should be a bigger number. And in my opinion, the number shouldn't be changed, because if there is increased erosion going on, you know, the 50-year setback is going to be bigger than today's 50-year setback. You know, since it's in years, it's going to take into account the increased...
It's not going to happen overnight, so the setback is going to be...
Yeah, the setback's not, so I would like to see the city, you know, stick with the 50 years, because since it's in years, I think you have the ability to adjust it based on circumstances.
Is, is the, are you still going to invite the coastal commission here?
Yeah, we did. We've been having a difficult time even getting a meeting with them among staff, so at this point, I don't know if that's going to happen.
I have a lot of questions for them.
Yeah.
And I know that's probably why you don't want them here, because I, I read their reports that they base their studies off of. It's really boarding on ridiculous.
Yeah.
It's a hypothetical study based on a lack of data they have, so it's a computation of models that, and now they're dictating something that is not going to happen overnight. This is a long-term process that affects a lot of individuals. And I really can't believe it has any traction at all, it has no merit when you read the report, so I would like to ask them, because maybe I'm reading the wrong reports, but...
I think the response you'd get is that the NRC report that I think you're talking about is kind of the best available science, but they've since been referring to more conservative studies that show that sea level rise is happening faster than reported in that document, and so they'd like to ramp it up further. But we, we share the concerns. And I'd be happy with coastal commission staff coming here, although I'd like to have a little bit more focus on that discussion, and where we're at now, we're, we really don't even have all their comments. I think I mentioned the commission, that we were told a few weeks ago that they still have another layer of review, and so that everything we've received to date is preliminary, that they have another level of management that needs to provide their comments.
Seems like this is really big part of the process, is the coastal commission, and so maybe we kick it around first at a meeting, particularly because we don't have their final, and then we decide what to do in terms of how we can, how we negotiate or discuss the situation with them.
Yeah, I think that's smart. Our, our intent is, we'll, we'll give you what we drafted, and we'll give you the coastal commission's verbatim comments in the track changes format, so you can see exactly what it is they wrote, and we'll try to highlight those areas that we think are, you know, really big policy issues.
I think it would be good for the, for the commission to be able to interact...
Oh, sure.
...with whoever's making, doing the review and making decisions, as, not just put it on the staff to...
Right.
So if, and I'd be interested also, if, if they're not using the NRC, which is what they point to in their reports for the change in their, what am I looking at, their codes and stuff that they're changing, how they're directing us, then what is that information? Because it should be transparent to all of us. And I, I'm not a scientist, I'll give you that, but I can read the report, I can read when it says, there is no data to support it. So there, there, the sea level rise, there's zero data, so they use climate control, or climate change, to make that judgment from, and there is no data for the climate change. So that they show in their reports, not, this is in TJ's words, this is what the reports say, so if now they've chosen new reports to make their data from, I would be curious to read them and...
So I think it's sort of a collection of different studies that have done up and down the West Coast for various jurisdictions, counties, regional efforts. We're currently participating in a grant-funded study with Moss Landing, Monterey County, and the county of Santa Cruz. That was supposed to be done last year, I'm supposed to get an update on the status this week. Hopefully, that report will be getting done soon, it'll be interesting to see what that effort produces. One of the things, though, that's, you know, kind of the, when you get down to the bones of it, is the assumptions you put into the model. In one of our earlier discussions, we were talking about what, what are the assumptions we're going to use? Coastal staff was, you know, taking very conservative approach, saying, well, 100-year storm's probably not good enough, you probably need a 500-year storm. When it happens during king tides, and in an El Nino year, and I thought, well, you know, that's natural disaster planning, that's not how you plan land use. Our study didn't use those assumptions, I don't think. But, you know, depending on what you plug into that model, you get different results.
Right, and that's really all they're using is modeling, and it's, it's a little disappointing that they're trying to control property owner rights based on a premise that they have, and so...
That's why I say, you know, you stick with the 50-year, you don't need to change that. And I think we all agree that if a structure has a 50-year life, it's managed to have a useful life.
Yes, I agree.
How many people own their home for 50 years, these days?
Yeah. Well, it'd be interesting to see. And then, you know, in the event of this, you know, 500-year incident with a king tide and someone loses their home, it's, that's why, that's why we have insurance, and so...
Yeah.
Didn't we have that in 82, 83?
Yeah. So, it's just when you read this, it's like, it's absolutely amazing, and I was surprised, I knew there had to be some other data, but their own information says, no comprehensive assessments of the rate of sea level rise off the coast of California, Oregon, and Washington have been carried out. Consequently, this report summarizes published research, meaning people's opinions, is what it really means. So it's like, and they're, they're taking a big leap on this to property owner rights. And while it doesn't affect me personally, it certainly affects our community, so...
Big time.
Right, and I think that there are, you know, some alternatives that ought to be discussed. I mean, I listened to one engineer talk about down in the village, you know, a few things that you could do down there that would significantly reduce the impact of sea level rise on the village. So, you know, I don't think we want to just, particularly for a place like Capitola Village that has a long history, just say, oh, okay, well, we're going to leave it, we're going to give it up.
Yeah.
I think it's appropriate to do some things to try and preserve it for a while and see what happens.
No, there's some areas, you mentioned the 82 storm, and so in 82, the Love Creek slide occurred. There was an older slide that happened many years before that, to the south of, kind of southeast of, of the Love Creek slide. And so the homes in that area between those two slides, they red-tagged and moved the people out of there. And those homes are still there today, so, not saying there can be some, there, you could see the immediate threat potentially for something like that. But this, that event was a significant, it happened in a moment, I mean, quickly enough that dogs couldn't have an opportunity to get off the couch and run somewhere. I mean, this sea level rise, should it happen as a predict, isn't going to be things going to catch us by surprise, it's not a tsunami that's going to come into town, so...
I think Zelda's deck is probably a bellwether for the year, if we see how far it gets under.
Right. When Zelda's deck is under, the whole year.
All right. Well, with that, that was a short meeting, which I did not expect, so I guess you'll get back to us, we could talk about the dates, you'll get back to us after you email the other commissioners and see what works.
What's the next one going to be about?
So, we still got wireless, we still have the coastal chapters and then red lines for the entire code and the glossary. The glossary will probably take a while. So, goal is to get, have it wrapped up in August, so we can move on to the city council and get through that process in the fall.
So, our July meeting, does it look like we have a number of things on the agenda that night already?
We do, yeah. There's probably four to five items on the July.
So, we definitely need one other meeting to try to get this...
Yeah, we'll need at least one more, probably two more.
Okay. And then, it would be nice to have one, you know, one meeting, at least to do the whole coastal thing, so it's kind of a separate process.
I may be able to fit the remaining red lines on, that we've done to date on the July 21st.
If it went as smooth as tonight, yeah.
It should be, yeah, after what happened, yeah. So, I'll try to put those on the schedule for July 21st, so at least we get through the red lines. And then, we'll probably have a special hearing for the wireless, which was on hold, and coastal, so that, that might be early August.
Sounds good.
So, with that, I guess we will...
I have a quick director's report.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We had a settlement, it's not a settlement meeting, with the court on the property on Capitol Road, the incomplete house, and the parties entered into stipulated judgment. Property owner has until August 31st to complete the house. Otherwise, the city will have the ability to go in, hire contractors, finish the work and build them. They've signed it, the judges blessed it, so hopefully in a couple of months, that house will be done.
So, what, I know they still have some landscaping to do. What else, and they were doing the roof, what else do they have to do?
Need to finish the roof. You know, the roof and the landscaping, cleaning up the front yard, I think are the big things.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Yeah, take the fence down. There's still some work on the inside of the house.
We don't care about that.
But, yeah, our main focus is getting the exterior done, and I think we'd be willing to work with them on the interior stuff.
So, then you're going to take on the house on the corner of Blue Gum and River View Drive that's been that way for as long as I can remember?
Oh.
There's several of them, I think.
There are, there's a couple on Sacramento that have been sitting for a while.
Yeah, when we entitled a couple of years ago.
I don't know.
That owner's been in recently and is starting to pursue the same thing.
They have another 15 years before.
That's about your typical, yes, cycle.
Good, so I guess we'll take a recess on this, and our next meeting, are we going to address this, that are, try to address some of the issues that are...
July 21st.
July 21st, okay. We'll continue, we'll just, do I need a motion to continue this, I guess? So, have a motion to continue us through the...
I'll make it.
Second? All those in favor, aye? It's approved? Perfect. Wow, really nice.